Bring your mics on.
So, we've gone live. We're now going to give ourselves a couple of minutes. Less than two minutes and then we'll start our work session. And Zach's gonna present, but I'll wait for that moment. We have one minute. Here's Zach. I'll let you have the mouse. Yeah, just stand at the podium. They got a microphone for you. You can just.
If the microphone's red. Yeah, you have to push the button.
Is on. Yes.
It's fixed or does it move? Let me.
It moves.
Wherever you like. I put it down low because not everybody's as tall as you are. And they're always trying to get way up there and trying to bend it down, so.
I've not been to a hotel where I haven't had to bend down in the shower since I was sixteen.
Your head on the shower head?
Yeah.
Small.
It's my curse.
Or you're able to shower with your hair dry.
Yeah, or that. No shower cap.
Okay, well, it's five thirty. I'm going to officially start our work session. And Zach from Jones and Associates is going to present to us the transportation utility fee report.
Yes, so thanks for having me. Yeah, just, yeah, thanks for the intro. Yeah, I just add to my own intro. I'm one of the engineers with Jones and Associates. I have, I'm actually the city engineer for Fruit Heights. And where we currently have a transportation utility fee enacted. We've had it actually for the last. I don't even know the exact amount of years, but for many years now. So, and this is, yeah, this is my, so this is my report. Hopefully you guys have had a chance to read through my report. That's my stamp on it, so. I'm the one who kind of put this together and if, I don't know who was still on council. I actually initially tried to present on this, I think back in twenty nineteen, end of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
I was the only one on the council at the time.
Yeah, so, and, and so, yeah, just a brief history because they, that's when we first were really looking at this. So I've got some data in here that is, was collected back then on the street condition assessment. And I included it, but anyways, the council back then just told me to kind of put a pin in that because there was some ongoing legal. Yeah.
Stuff going on in another city where there was, they had to clear up court some.
So, yeah, the council wisely just wanted to wait that out, see how that played out, and it kind of played out in the city's favor at the time. And, and so anyways, that's why we've revisited. So, maybe I'll just quickly go through. I had a couple just notes here and I, I don't know. Gosh, I need to, I'm using this mouse and have my computer, so I'm using myself.
Just to keep you confused.
Yeah, just to keep me confused. I will probably just hit on this pavement cycle. I mean. I feel bad for you guys. I'm trying not to make it boring. I can get right to the meat of it and we can talk about that if you want. But just the quick, basic understanding of a pavement cycle, right? Ours is. You know, streets have a lifespan of typically twenty years, right? I mean, you, we've all probably in your lifetime seen roads that are past that twenty year life, still functioning. But I would consider them, you know, not alive, you know, the life in their lifespan. They're alligatored, they're rutted. The axle, the axle loading on it's just literally created tire ruts through the asphalt. Or it's just in a condition that's not safe to drive, right? Stopping, plowing, you just can't do it. Typically a twenty year service life. I quantify that in this report as an RSL. It's an acronym for that remaining service life. We use that twenty years to gauge the current level of service. The more economical approach to just maintenance of these roads is preserve the roads rather than delaying the reconstruction, right? So lots, some city models literally just brand new roads. They'll just ride them out those twenty years and then. You know, maybe rebuild them then, start over then, or twenty years plus, you know? Because some guys like, you know, some, excuse me, some cities like to, you know, stretch that budget as long as they can. And I don't blame them because that's kind of what I want to get into. As traffic increases, cost of laying repair works increases significantly. Repairing the worst roads first is a very expensive way to operate. And so this chart I've got up kind of shows you that cycle and, and some of the approaches. I, I've worked with Dave Bunterson for a while now on help, you know, just trying to evaluate and do street maintenance projects here in Far West. And we've tried to take this, you know, keep the good roads good approach. And still address any failing roads and doing that sort of thing with the budget we have, right? And that's been the challenge. It's always a challenge. It's not, it's not unique to Far West. It's, you know, everybody's challenge. And, and so that's why, you know, I think Nate and the city has asked us to really seriously evaluate and look at this transportation utility fee. From what Dave is, is the info he's given me on this are Class C funds and Prop One local operating gas tech funds. From the state, we have approximately three hundred eighty-two thousand dollars a year. For a city as big as Far West is now, especially with all the new development. Doesn't really cover, and I'll get into that here and I'll show you that maybe the, we'll get down to. Yeah, there it is. So, yeah, maybe I'll just thumb through some of this, but there, there's this kind of breakdown of it on the report. And so we, we took that, we took this initial understanding of our budget and say, you know, how, how are we applying it? This evaluation process, because it's not covering. The amount of projects we need to do to keep the average RSL value that we have. Sorry. And I maybe got ahead of myself because we did that twenty twenty evaluation. We had I-Works. Drive the city and literally look and scan every road. And they, and gave it their own classification based on that twenty year RSL value. And I think in the appendix, I don't, I, my PDF viewer is different, but I will maybe get down to the map. Right here, see if I can zoom out a little. So this is the twenty twenty-four map. Based on the legend here. And what we did there, well, here, let me show you this one. This was that initial one dated back in August of twenty twenty twenty. Sorry, I'm not zoomed in all that great on this, but. The legend is up top here and that, you're, you're, you're pretty much in good shape if most of this map is blue or green. We've got a lot of red, yellow, orange. The green and blue stuff is new development areas or roads that we just did recent. And this, again, this is twenty twenty. So, our office. At the direction of Dave, has been tracking our street maintenance projects and updating our, your city GIS map. To. Incorporate it into this evaluation. So we took that I-Works evaluation. Added our street maintenance we've done obviously since twenty twenty, you know, it's twenty twenty-five, so five years worth of street maintenance. Similar color scheme on the RSL gauge, right? Blues, greens are your, your better roads. I mean, there's a little bit more blues and greens. Central, I'll call this central town, just north, south and central. Even south into town, you know, we did some treat, surface treatments there, but. But is that, that's Ramuda, right? This Ramuda area. Getting, dipping in the reds and oranges, right? And, so. Anyways, this is just kind of a visual, right, for the, for the current evaluation. And we looked at that and gave a citywide average, right? And what I wanted to, what I wanted to point out, right, because the Utah League of Cities and Towns just, just has been, just published. Gosh, I really wish I could have shared this table, but. I want to help the council understand the difference, right? Understanding the difference between a city imposed tax versus a fee. And that's critical mostly for the residents, right? Any residents interested in this or that might contest this, it's like, here, here's the difference. Here's, here's the fundamental difference, right? So with a tax, who authorizes it? Well, it's the state, right? A fee, who authorizes? It's the city. Same, so a tax, who administers it, right? It's the State Tax Commission administered the tax. But in, for a fee, it's still the city, okay? And what's it for, right? A tax is for revenue for general government. A fee though, a city fee, what's it for? Is a service fee, specific charge and return for specific benefit. A regulatory fee for a city is specific charge which defrays the government's cost of regulation. And also key, key differences there. And then this to me is, is, is one of the more important things is who pays, right? Taxes versus fees. On a tax, some property owners, but not all. Examples are property tax and exempt property tax and sales tax and various bases, right, for taxes. But a fee is all users, all users pay for services, right? To be a legit fee for service, amount charged must bear a reasonable relationship to the service provided, right? Benefits received or, or need created, right? So the benefits Far West cities providing is that, is that RSL value, right? You're providing streets that are in a good working condition. And so that's what I had to use. In order to assess a fee, this is a study, we have, we have to use values like that, right, to justify the study for the fee. And so citywide, we looked at the average condition or individually, like you could pull this map and say your road, this road, specific road is, is RSL value of this. But then we looked at the aggregate and said, okay, your citywide fee, and I had that up. I think it's in the report, but I'm using my slides, sorry, just because I had probably more quickly prepared. No. It might be in this one. No, it is right. That's right there. Twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, average RSL is around eight point two. When we did that update in twenty twenty-four, it had, it had dropped to about seven and a half, which really, again, this is, that's the average number. Saying citywide, we've dropped over five years in average RSL value of around one year dropping. I mean, at that rate, in the next five years, like with seven years left on your average, that's. With the current budget you have, and, and maybe the, let me get up to this graph. This might, yeah, this might better. This might better represent what I'm talking about. Well, again, I'm sorry, I'm kind of jumping all over, but I think it'll make sense and we can go through questions if you have them. So this red line. So again, average, average RSL over ten year period, let me get to the X axis, your, your years, right? Twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, et cetera, RSL value. The red line is, is kind of our current state with the current budget we have. That is the projected RSL value over the next ten years. With the current budget. And so what the stat, city staff asked me to do is to look at ten different scenarios, excuse me, nine total scenarios. One of them being, you know, scenario one being nothing, right? We're just stay it as is. And see where that gets us. And then go in increments, starting at three dollars to one dollar increments all the way up to ten dollars. Per what I, another acronym I'm going to throw at you is ERU, right? Equivalent residential usage, right? So with this tax study, I have to evaluate the current level of service. Because that's our baseline. That's saying the city provides this type of service and the type of service is those existing roads, that condition. But then you have to make it equitable, meaning.
Do you have a number on that ERU, like, like per ERU, it is X amount per person?
Right, and, sorry, where am I at? This part of the report. That's fine. It's a good question because I do have one and it's right here. So this is my. Spreadsheet.
Spreadsheets are great on screens, huh?
Oh, yeah, especially as big as I had to make this one, but, so. And I do, I do have it. This is the residential one, but my total is here at this column at the bottom. Seven thousand seven hundred ninety-six. ERUs, and again.
Per ERU, what is that dollar amount?
Depending on which fee you charge, so, so.
I mean, it's what basically I'm just looking at, what is that ERU costing us present day? You know?
Before a fee?
Yeah, before a fee.
So you're asked, sorry, let me, let me figure out that. So you have. Your exist, your existing amount of residential usage, what is it costing you per day? I mean.
Per ERU per day.
How's that being assessed?
Per month. Per month. Per year. Per year is great.
What is it costing you in terms of what?
How much does it cost to maintain the roads today?
Today. For that ERU.
Well, that's kind of the argument is, is I don't, I don't think you're maintaining the roads because.
I understand that, but right now, what is that? Because I saw that, you know, we're looking at the red line that's going like this, but right now, what does that ERU cost us?
Because I still don't understand what you're asking.
What's the current cost? And then what are we drawing in from?
You're, you're, you only have a budget of that three eighty-two.
I'm not worried about budget. I'm saying what are, what present, present day, what does that ERU cost us?
Are you talking per household? Yeah, per family. Okay, so here I am as a resident of Far West. Am I being charged a fee? How much is it?
You are not, yeah, you don't have a TUF.
No, we don't have a TUF. But right now, it's costing us something for that ERU and you've had to have that number somewhere. To base, to base your growth on what we would need.
Would it be three hundred ninety thousand divided by eight thousand?
Yeah, that, that'd probably be the only way I'd work it because it's, it's, it's not, it's not costing you anything other than what you've budgeted. So that's maybe why I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around what you're asking because. You're, yeah, let me get to. This.
That's back to the three eighty-two, right?
Eighty-two divided by roughly eight thousand residents.
This is your available funding, I mean.
I'm looking at what, what that's costing us and so.
Divide by that total ERUs. Your seven, that's seven thousand could be your, your current. Or rather, maybe the way I, I mean. It's maybe the way you phrase it is probably what confused me because that, that's what you're spending. You could, yeah, the spending per ERU, you could look at it like that because.
Forty-eight dollars a month.
A month or a year.
Like that's three eighty-two divided by eight thousand residents.
That's annual, so that's, that's fifty-three dollars per person annually.
Correct. Roughly.
That you're, that the city, I guess, is spending on, on the street budget.
Residential units, a house, not people, right?
Correct, an equivalent residential.
For residents.
But we're dividing it by the population.
No, we're dividing it by the households, aren't we not?
Population is that's, that's.
Well.
So that's individual.
Yeah, okay, if you want to look at, if you want to look at residents, and that's what I can dive into here. You, this spreadsheet is. Equivalent residential usage based on building square footage, trip generation.
So not by population, but by.
By, again, you have to bring it to equitable, right? It's equal for all. And if you're just looking at what you're spending right now based on residents, taxpaying residents, that number's less. That's in this table at the top on residential only.
Well, if we're looking at, if we're looking at an ERU, it's going to be assessed per household, is that correct?
No, it's going to be, if, if you instigate this, this transportation utility fee, it will be assessed per. Your equivalent residential unit. So if you're a business, your, your business has an equivalent residential usage in trip generation. Of a certain number on this table, like let's, I can pick one and show you what I mean.
So while you're doing that, how you can equalize it? I'm the only resident in my house. You get another house that's got eight people in it.
That's why we're dividing it by the, by the. So you have, you look at the, the population.
By the residents.
Yeah, it's ERU is a residence. You can't.
Not by how many people are in the house.
You're, so this, and it's statistically based, right? So every home statistically generates on this table that rate nine point four three trips per day. So kind of regardless on average, right? It's on average.
Thousand four hundred and thirty-one ERUs.
Yeah, total residential units. So, and this is take, that was taken from Bonavista's billing, they're, they're billing their water for. Well, and then you got to throw in, that's what it is now, but you got to throw in residential too.
But this isn't going to be prorated. It's just across the board. Every resident's going to pay an equal share.
Every resident will have that ERU rate. Household, household, resident, yeah, every household, single family, right? The description up top on that, on that table. So we classify it as a single family home.
It's like we don't charge different for garbage between houses, no matter how much people actually throw out.
Right. However. In this case. Depending on the demographics of those residences, some people don't go anywhere. And other people are going twenty or thirty times a day.
That's an average, yeah. And you could, you could argue too, but it's trip generation too. So even though they don't, I mean, if, if they have food delivered, if they have, you know, family come over, friends come over, that type of stuff, that's, that's a trip generation.
So you're talking about wear and tear on the streets, averaging it out between the number of residents in the city.
And so like, so northern asphalt, you look, and I broke it up into the, these categories. You got industrial, you got commercial, you got retail, churches, schools, government.
They have their own level of ERU.
Correct. They have their own level of ERU and I did it based on, so ITE trip generation, that's, that's kind of what a civil engineering. Industry uses. It, it's, it's just a statistical based trip count, right? It's just data. I've got, I've got data going back for, you know, decades on certain, these, these same classifications. So I assigned a classification code to each of these types of industries, this code and building, which generates this rate. Per unit. And some of these, I, I mostly did it by this IT unit. I mostly did it by this building square footage. But some of these like, like this car wash, what was it? What is this one? Hon and Oil. I, they, they don't do it by building size. It's like by stalls, right? How many, how many car wash stalls? And, and you can, you can figure out how much trip generations each stall has. Anyways, that's all worked out in this table. I don't think I did, yeah, dwelling units, rooms, one was a hotel, right, the Comfort Inn, based on how many hotel rooms, not so much the building size because each room. Yeah.
Gulf horse in the summer.
Yeah, but I, but even that, like Ramida, I think I did a, the building, like clubhouse size and stuff, but.
Can you go back to the residential section for a second?
Sure.
Okay, so there you are and you're looking at residential and you've got. Two thousand four hundred and thirty-one units, right?
Correct.
Twenty-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-four ERUs. Now, when you were back.
Yeah, no, sorry, those are trips. That's daily trips, just divided out, yeah.
Okay, so we're the two forty-three. As you slide that over now and you start to look at your rates.
Yep, so the three dollar.
Those now start to correspond with your lines, is that correct?
Correct, so.
So, the three dollar one, that's your lowest one down on the thing. Your ten dollar one is up there either the red or the red or the green one at the top, or the blue or the green, whatever you had up there.
Correct.
All right? So that ten dollars per unit. Or an individual resident.
Sorry, I'm driving this different program.
I'm trying to see how that now.
This one is.
Calculates out. Let's just go, let's say for the ten dollar unit, all right? Back down where you were, okay? The individual. Residential. Rate would be that ten dollars times what?
That's per house.
Per house, yeah.
Or per ERU.
Exactly. And each house has how many ERUs?
One.
No.
Yes.
One ERU. So I'm going to what, pay ten dollars a year, ten dollars a month?
A month. It, it'd be, I think it's structured for a monthly rate, right?
So that, it would be ten dollars a month, service fee, what added on to my Bonavista bills, that where it's going to show up as an.
Yes.
Is it tough?
Yeah, or however, yeah, however you guys do your billing, like in Leighton City, I get a stormwater fee, I get the, I, I'm trying to think if they have a TUF. Yeah, it's on your, your monthly fee sheet.
So if we went for seven dollars a month, we still don't come out in a bad place, do we?
Yeah, I mean, really, all of them start to, and I'm glad you asked about this and I, and I can. Again, I don't want to get off in the weeds too much unless you want me to.
No, but I'm just trying to look at how we employ this.
Sure. Because, because all of these really start to climb that, I mean, initially, let's see, because, because you get that downward trend until about twenty, about three years from now, right? Because you still need those funds to help bring that, start to bring your average up. Because right now, this red line is the trend you're on.
Yeah, but if you went line number four up there, that's the seven dollar a month on that pink one.
The pink, yeah, yeah, pink one.
We start to get ahead by twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, that much.
Get ahead of the curve.
There's my table.
Yeah, we start to change the direction of that whole thing.
Scenario six is what he's looking at.
Yeah, trying to. I can navigate a lot.
Right in the middle. There you got it, right?
Total, I'm just trying to give you a dollar amount total on that, like scenario seven. Over ten years, yeah, that's like ten million dollars, but your annual increase, you go from three hundred thousand to about a million dollars. You know, and that obviously, that kind of speaks for itself. You can do a lot of road maintenance for.
I don't think seven dollars a month per family is a lot to ask.
It's about how much recycling was.
Exactly. I'm glad to give up my blue can and chip in to help take care of the roads. Which I already did.
Yeah, so balance in the.
Take it back. I, I don't think we need to go to ten. But I think we need to stay ahead of the curve. And so I look at that.
Tell me why it declines on the top three after the.
Sure.
Because the costs are catching up to the.
Yeah, exactly. The costs are kind of catching up to that average because, because you've got roads, even, even back here that start there. Again, you're, you're looking at the average, the citywide average. And so you've got roads, by the time we get to twenty thirty. Those roads that were at the high end start falling off. And so. And the, the quantity of those roads that are falling off is what's starting to catch up. But, but couple that, like this was a very multi-variable equation. I don't love. I didn't, I love my spreadsheet, but there's a lot of variables I had to account for. And honestly, a lot of that curve, a lot of any of the drops past twenty twenty-five, or excuse me, past twenty thirty. Can be arguably the types of treatments you choose. And these are just, this is, I, I ran dozens of iterations on this.
I guess why I'm wondering is why, let's, so the difference between scenarios six and seven. So six still has a pretty much, pretty.
Some upward trend.
Trend. Seven, eight, nine tell off. So why, why is that?
That, that is, and I did that on purpose because that is because of the treatments I chose in those two years. Meaning, you, meaning instead of doing an overlay, because. Chip seal, the, the surface type buys you more RSL value. I intentionally dropped those off because I said, let's just, let's just do some that give me two or three years. Yeah, so that, but, but I want, I did that on purpose to kind of show that depending on the treatment you choose and depending on who's managing your streets. Can certainly take that money and, and, you know, spend it away, right?
The bucks and this is showing, could we not?
Yes, yes. There, because, keep in mind, this is, it's a statistical analysis based on a snapshot. I said, you know, I still did a bunch of iterations. And if, if I chose to do a crack seal on everything for the next ten years, that's not going to get you, that's not going to build up your RSL. That's just going to put Band-Aids on broken arms, right? You, you just don't, you, you could do that. I mean, cities have done things crazier, but. But you want to choose.
Gravel for a while.
Want to choose, and, and so year over year, cities are faced with, you know, you have to deal with the problem or we, and. And if that takes all our budget, then we have to do that, or we just keep on a regular maintenance plan. And that's what grows. And that's what'll grow these lines like that kept consistent. I just chose some very conservative. Annual maintenance, but these, these top ones, I thought, eh, look, just for fun, I'm going to curve this down and do some stupid treatments. And, and, and it'll drop it.
Is the TUF duration variable, is it ten years or can we go twelve? Or can we go eight?
Duration, it could be forever.
Yeah, you, you could, you could, well, yeah, we, I think we talked about that is, is you could start off with it and I, I'm not advocating this, but I, but you can certainly also play with the dollar amount. You can play with the duration. Because again, what, to make this justifiable and you have to, you have to update this study. I'm trying to remember now the, the term on that, that, there is a term on how often you have to update your study because you have to say, yeah, we've been charging a TUF for the last five years. And if I'm a resident, I'm going to say, well, what have you been doing with that? Like, have, have we been, have we been increasing my, my level of service? Have the roads in Far West improved or gotten worse? Have the roads in far west improved, or gotten worse?
Show me that it's worked.
Show me that it's worked, and, and, and we could do that. We could say, okay, let's see what we did, let's, let's publish these, uh, the street maintenance we've done.
Well, these are dedicated funds, are they not?
Yeah, these are dedicated ones, yeah.
And so it ought to be able to be reviewed, it ought to be transparent, we ought to be able to see the image on your city overview changing.
Correct, yeah.
Red should be going to blue and green.
These should be increasing, or, well, actually, I was gonna say, should be at, at, at least staying the same, meaning the level of service shouldn't decrease. But shouldn't necessarily increase, and if it's increasing, then as a resident, I'm saying, well, then why am I paying so much?
Well, those reds and pinks that you've got should start to go away. Some of the blues and the greens and the oranges are gonna start to change color in a downward direction, cause we're not paying attention to them right now. They're all right, but the other stuff has to be dealt with. So we should see some back and forth on this map of.
My question was, we don't know what the weather's gonna bring, we don't know what, what traffic patterns are gonna increase or decrease over time, so we need to be, have a little bit of a variable option.
Yeah, exactly. You're, depending on how much development comes in, and you guys is like transportation master plan, if you decide that, if a new collector comes in, you know, outside of, I don't know, I fifteen's probably the, you know.
I fifteen's right through the middle of it.
Yeah, but I, I can't imagine you guys have a different. Sure.
Residential-ish development.
But if one of those roads just turns into like the new main street, right, and, and that, that could certainly change the way you, you approach your street maintenance. You know, and Dave, Dave has to deal with, you know, cause, cause again, lots of cities will focus their main rebuilds or their main treatments on the main, well, on the more used roads, the collectors.
Fortunately, in far west, the heavily used roads are UDOT roads.
The two.
Twenty-seven hundred.
Yeah.
And two thousand west.
Then we have four, four thousand, thirty-three hundred and eighteen hundred. That, those are the ones east and west, and then twenty-five seventy-five are probably.
And those are gonna continue to increase.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, because we have people beyond us.
However, when we look at the line between us and Plain City, right down through the middle of the road, that ought to be something that we're sharing the responsibility for maintenance with. We shouldn't have to bear the full burden for that whole north-south. Well, I, no, I'm serious, that's sort of something we have to look at and say, okay, what are we gonna fix, our side of the road, and yours can go?
We don't really have roads right on the border. Yeah, there's, there's nothing to be decided.
So the road is ours, and the yards are theirs.
No, there's. There are no roads right on the border.
We stop, we stop, and then this is our road, and then it's Plain City's in almost every.
North-south?
Yeah.
Through me and Meadows out there, you know, where that.
There, there might be a handful of blocks where it's really close.
There's a, there's an intersection, and then it goes that way, but that's still.
But the main street is ours.
Yeah.
Even though their properties abut that.
Yeah, we're about maybe six blocks.
The other side of the road is Plain City. The street is ours.
There, there, that's only about six blocks total.
Point in time, there's gonna be another assessment kind of requested or due. So we can really evaluate. How much does that cost, and does that come out of the?
Yeah, just like, just like maybe your, I don't know, sewer impact fees, like, these fees you, you charge, and you have to, you have to have current reporting on, on how you're, um, using the funds, so.
Like every.
Like, yeah. Fruit Heights, I'm trying, I, I, I think it's ten years, like, I could be wrong, but Fruit Heights, we, we redo it every ten years, and we look at, okay, how have we been using these funds? What is the current condition of our, of our roads, and have they increased or decreased the average, uh, RSL? We actually use, or they use different software, it's a software you pay for that runs a lot more iterations, it's, then I don't have to, the way I did this was kind of manually, which, I mean, it got this similar information, but there, there are certainly, I mean, different ways to attack it, but anyways, yeah, so we have to do that to then justify and have a current report for the state, you know, if the state says, hey, if this is a fee, you know, and you're using public monies, then.
Zach, we're, we're approaching something that we're not currently doing. If we employ this tough, and we start charging this fee, I think ten years too far out. I think in five years, we ought to give an accountability of what we've done with this. I think we need to look at it sooner than later. Uh, that's my personal opinion. If we were already engaged, and it was an ongoing thing, and we were comfortable with it, maybe the ten years would be good, but from where I sit, looking at this, uh, if we start charging this fee to every household in the city, I think we need to return and report within five years at least. But that's just an observation that I'm seeing here. I think ten years too far away for us to have it to answer what's going on.
Another side to that that I've been thinking about quite a bit, is that we, we have a responsibility to maintain those roads. If we do nothing, it's, it's not gonna happen.
We're gonna be derelict.
If we don't do a tough, we're gonna have to do a truth of taxation and increase property tax, there's no getting around it, one way or another. And I think that needs to be open conversation. We're either gonna have to raise taxes, or this fee will help us.
It locks it in just for roads.
If you're talking to the public about this, and you say, we have a utility fee here. A fee is a lot easier to digest than you're gonna raise my property taxes, I don't want to hear that.
Exactly.
I don't want to hear the T word.
This is, this is guided directly towards maintaining our roads.
Well, yeah, so what, it will pay for crack seal, chip seal, patching, milling overlays, reconstruction, but I thought was interesting, you can do curb, gutter, and sidewalk with widening projects. If you got a road with no shoulders, et cetera, and you're like, we, let's, let's, let's take this road and, and make it, you know, traversable for pedestrians now, like, now that we got all this growth, we need to make it safe. So it's not so much just maintaining roads, it's like, maybe growing the roads you have for the purpose of this, of the service, right? Right, exactly. It's another type of maintenance, so that's, I think, important to.
Our vision might not be the same as someone else's vision in ten years, and they might change that.
The, the, the next city council could take those funds that came from that and, and, and go build something else.
Yeah, but this puts it in a lockbox, it can only be used for one thing. That, there's a great sense of security.
The fee is for something.
Yes.
It's sort of like, your garbage, your fee is for something.
And then depending on which scenario is selected, we need to be considerate of other fees that are going up, sewage is going up, water is going up, everything's going up, Medicare is going up. Um, everything's gonna start burning people's pocketbooks. Everything's gonna start going up and burning people's pocketbooks. So what's too big a bite, what's a reasonable bite?
Right, and, and we can choose to start low and increment higher.
Right, that, and that's why they asked me to just do dot one dollar increments. I started with five dollar increments, and they said, no, let's bring it down, and so that's, I got those nine options for that.
We need to do truth and taxation on.
It's not a tax.
I think so.
Does this require a public hearing before you instigate it? Yeah. The public ought to know what we're doing, cause it's not a tax. It's fee. But the same thing happened when we initiated recycling. Yeah, we had a public hearing, who wants in, who wants out, who wants not to be a part of it, and then we did another round here to decide now what.
This is one of those, I don't think you can opt out.
No, once we do this one, everybody's all in. You can't choose not to do this.
Unless you never go on the road, ever.
How are you gonna prove that?
You don't. That's what I'm saying.
Who would, so yeah, so you start this, who would draft that ordinance, and some of, do we need to iron that out, or, or there's a lot of? I would expect, cause again, we have it in Fruit Heights, I think the only real big business we have in Fruit Heights is Cherry Hill, that's it. You've got a lot more than that in here, and so, I would, and more, a lot of these bigger businesses, bigger square footage, and some of these fees in here are pretty high. For these businesses now, I, I'm not gonna argue. Exactly, it's pretty high. I just, I guess the only point I'm trying to make is, if, if we do that, I mean, I would expect some, some pushback. And so, I don't know if, if, if it's even worth talking about right now, but you kind of discuss options in that ordinance on how they would appeal, cause, cause some people might argue like, well, I'm not industrial, I'm retail, or whatever, and they wanna, they want a different, you know, cause I, when I, when I do these, I mean, I get nothing but people critiquing them, and I'm just like, look, I just took a data-driven approach, like, don't take it personal, but some of the. Appeal it, or like, like true, true public, if, if you're, if you're doing a fee, and you're saying, well, we, we believe you should do this, and they should be, say, based on what? And we can show them this, and I have no problem defending that. But they, I mean, you, you know, I mean, maybe, you know, I don't, I don't know how bad far west is, I just know some of those cities are, and they might fight.
Speaking, turn on the mic, and so we get you recorded.
So it'd be kind of like the, um, stormwater fee. So in, in our ordinance, it states in there that if, if it's, wants to be debated or appealed, uh, that a body can come in and, and say, hey, I'm, I'm doing this to, to alleviate some of the stormwater effect or impact of the city, the city council can decide to reduce that fee.
Yeah, like, I just thought of something, like, if one of these businesses decides, say, hey, you know what, we do remote, we, we don't have our employees come in anymore, like, we're all remote now. Like, so you, we don't generate the same whatever, and, and they could, they could appeal that, and then prove that, hey, we're not generating that same amount of traffic anymore.
And the council could consider that.
Exactly.
Decide whether or not to reduce.
And that's something that Liam could put in the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, so anyways, I, I think, I think that'd be worth, I don't know, considering at this point, if we're discussing whether or not you're gonna do it, because.
How does this play out? Commercial, manufacturing, industrial, as opposed to residential.
They have their different.
They have a different ERU, and they're gonna be doing, they're gonna be paying a fee as well.
Yes.
Uh, we're just talking about five or six dollars per household.
Would it be five or six per ERU?
Exactly. What's Associated Food gonna do?
You have the number of ERUs for them, right?
Well, that's who we don't get any money from today, and they're beating the tar out of our roads.
There are those trucks.
They're up here.
Commercial. I don't see.
That's where the specifics of this help as well.
They're.
Associated Foods. Warehousing, nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, based on county, so they're, they're actually not the highest. Gas stations actually generate more trip generation, so like the Mavericks, the Burger Kings, and McDonald's as well. So, but that three dollar a month, or three dollars per ERU per month, puts Associated Foods at five hundred dollars a month. You go to the ten bucks, they're fif- almost fifteen hundred dollars. But, yeah, let me get up to.
I'm gonna say it's fair per ERU and their impact to the roads.
Here, here, these two, just three dollars a month for these two is almost two thousand, and thirteen hundred, and that's uh, seven eleven Maverick, you know, those types of businesses. You're obvi- I mean, some of these gas stations generate almost a thousand trips a day. So, anyways, that's.
See, and they, they could even argue, like, a, a Maverick can come in and say, well, our trips, uh, half of our trips are coming off of a UDOT road. So they could come in here and say, can, can we get it reduced because it's, half our trips are going out on the UDOT, not, not a city road?
That's something we could consider.
I fifteen, you get back on I fifteen.
So there has to be a way, but if we're gonna start doing things like that on, on a case-by-case exception, there has to be a uni- uniform, exceptional application. It can't be, well, we like what you said, but we don't like what you said. It's gotta be, it has to be that, and it has to be, uh, equitably employed. Uh, so that it doesn't look like there's favoritism.
Has to be dated driven.
And that's not hard for them to do. Again, my, mine was just using the IT data, they could.
They could have a trip.
They could have a trip counter out there and, and prove that, yeah, I mean, what, what I'm saying, yeah, it gen- it should generate that number, or close to it, on average.
Be careful with their trip generators, cause they might find.
Yeah, but like you said, a lot of these businesses are along twenty-seven hundred north, and so they're off the freeway to the place. But then they're going home. And then that's when it comes back into the residential.
Sure.
Instead of the commercial.
There, there's a lot of factors, for sure.
There's a lot of overlap, for sure.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's the really quick download of it, I mean, are there any other questions on like, how I derived any of that? Or any other discussion, or question you have for me on any of this data?
Well, my question is, is how would you go about employing this?
Well, when we, if we decide to go forth with this, when we're talking about budget, we can choose to implement, you know, a tough, and then we can decide, okay, what scenario rate do we want to go with?
Level do we want to start?
And then how do we work through the, any appeal process?
Well, our budget has to be done by the end of June, isn't that right?
Yes.
So if we're gonna do that, we don't want to wait till the middle of June to decide we're gonna do this, this needs to happen sooner. If that's gonna become an active part of our budget.
Yeah, we'll definitely have that conversation, but this is the data, so we can have that conversation. Uh, and hopefully, and Zach's done a great job of, uh, giving us the data, so now we should chew on this data for a while, and have any further conversations during our budget work sessions.
Yeah, and, and feel free, I, uh, I don't even know if I put my, I mean, Nate's got it, as I say, feel free to reach out. Yeah, nowhere to find me. I'm happy to take phone calls if you're chewing on this a little longer, and still trying to make sense of something, call me. I am happy to try to explain some of these numbers, and, and why they work out the way they do, so. Put it even at the bottom, I don't. Yeah, there you go. It's all there.
Zach, did we get copies of this?
Yeah, I think so, if they sent it out with.
It's in the Dropbox for sure.
I, I looked at the email and couldn't find it. Okay, thanks.
I'll take the mouse back. Unless you want to take it home. You kept trying, didn't you? Okay, well, thank you. Any more questions for Zach on this?
Thank you.
Any, any conversation between us?
I think we had a little of that, and I think we're.
I think we've got a lot to think about here. I appreciate having the information available to, for us to go over and.
Thank you, Zach.
Thanks, Zach. Okay, we have fifteen minutes before we start our next meeting. Lindsay has arrived, so we're safe and sound. I think I pushed the button correctly on YouTube.
Close out our meeting?
Should've got a red car before he sold his. Hey, Lou. I'm not going to get in front. Cherry or something.
Nice.
Cherry or apple.
Can you use theirs? Really?
Somebody's got to do it. I got to warm it up.
No, that's, that's for the mayor of the-
I know. He said I could play.
I like the sound of this one better, do you?
I have him conferred that on the mayor.
Oh, oh, that thing works. This is the U City Council's mallet, so excuse me on that. First time it's been used. Uh, let's call this thing to order, um, for February sixth, six thirty P M, our regular meeting. We're going to have a, Katie is excused, and the rest of us are here. We're going to start off with Bob offering a prayer and, uh, David leading us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity to meet. We ask thee to be with all of us. Please bless the residents of Far West, the people that work within Far West, and those that travel through Far West. That we can all be safe and blessed with thy Spirit. And Heavenly Father, please bless us that we can do good viable work here this night. That we can work as a community, as a city council, to better our city and to, uh, do good things and, and run the city favorably. And Heavenly Father, we're grateful that thou would be here with us. And we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, David. Okay, our, uh, next on the agenda is public comment. So if there's anybody in the public who would like to come up and address the city council, please come up and take your two minutes. I'll take that as nobody wants to come talk to us. Report from Planning Commission. Madam Chair?
And I'm forced to talk to you, so I'm just kidding.
Oh, well, what a shame.
There's something on here later.
I know, I know. I'm sorry. Okay, I have, I, forgive me if I forget anything, because it's been like two weeks since we had our meeting. So we had a work session, uh, continuing to talk about the external ADUs. So I think we're just about done. I think we'll finish it in this next work session, so.
Right. I, I think we're also pausing a little bit to see what the legislature is going to do.
Yes, that was too.
They might have some, I think we're good, but, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think you're exactly right, that that's actually where we landed on that one. Um, okay, then we held two public hearings. One for the general plan amendment to change, um, the far north parcels behind the Maverick from M one in our general plan to, um, C three. The property is currently zoned M one, however, the future land map will show C three. So we held a public hearing for that, as well as a public hearing, um, to potentially rezone that portion all to C three. And the public hearing for the general plan, we then voted, and that you'll see tonight, but then the rezone was tabled or, or never motioned or, or acted upon. But we did hold bo- both public hearings. Um, surprisingly, they were actually, um, pretty well received. I think they just want to know what's going on, but it was one of the better public hearings that I've been a part of, so. Okay, then we went into preliminary approval of legends, previously Black River, River Blacksmith, sorry. Um, that they've just changed the name. That was tabled for a little bit more information. They're actually going to be coming back with a slight development agreement adjustment and, um, a cleaner engineer's memo for their prelim. So it's a lot of upfront for their prelim, because they're doing the whole thing at once. So they're cleaning that up. Then we recommended to the Administrative Land Use Authority the approval of the Heritage Ranch amended subdivision. It was just a lot line adjustment. And then we, oh, the important stuff. We reappointed Planning Commission members, uh, Lou Best and myself. And Brandon Whiteside decided that he doesn't have the appropriate time to serve right now, so there will be an open spot. Uh, well, and in saying that, we moved Jason Anderson up as a full voting member, and then we have an open alternate spot. So that will be coming around. Then there was recommendation to city council approval, or sorry, appointment of the Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. That being Chair, uh, it was motioned for myself, and then Vice Chair being, uh, Lyle. Feels right, and that was it.
Okay, you're all happy about it, huh?
Yes.
I can tell. Any questions for the Chair?
Yeah, but I'm not going to ask it right here.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to miss you on Youth City Council.
Oh, I had to pick wisely this year.
You chose poorly.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we missed you in Salt Lake.
Jason will be such a good asset.
He'll be fine.
He'll be great.
So thanks for your report.
Thank you.
Just period yet, because we have our, it'll be quick, I believe. In consent items, assignments and directions for the Planning Commission. Do we have anything new and wonderful for them, or do we still have plenty for them?
Just want that E A D U.
That they're working on.
Yep, that'll be good.
Okay, if nothing else, then no new assignments. Uh, the next thing is consider approval of minutes dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have Boyd and Dave. It's motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Consider approval of bills dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I move that we approve the bills for January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
All second.
Okay, Tim and Bob are motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Approved unanimously. Okay, on to business items. Consider approval of business licenses. We're going to start with D W Halls LLC. Do we have a representative? Come on up and explain to us what's going on, and answer any questions these guys might have.
Okay, so, um, I applied for an LLC through the state. Um, just trying to get my business license. It's just a general transportation company that I'm doing. Be hauling all sorts of different, um, items. I manage a, um, construction equipment rental location. So that's kind of how I got into it, just transporting machines and all sorts of stuff like that.
Can you give us your name? Introduce yourself.
I'm Dallin Webster.
Okay, Dallin, and where is your base for this equipment?
It'll just be out of my home, so I actually have, I have, um, storage at my work location in West Haven. And I also have storage in Pleasant View at, um, my wife's business. So I'll probably store a couple trailers at either of those, but-
Is it a semi? Is it a, what, what type?
No, it's just a one-ton, um, fourteen thousand pound truck.
Okay, is this, um, so one of the problems we've had in the past is with this type of, of a business, where they're parking trucks and trailers in the streets, in the driveways, blocking sidewalks. So, talk, speak to that.
So that, like I said, I have other areas I'm going to be keeping equipment. I do have a fully paved driveway on the side of my house. I might keep a trailer back behind the fence, but other than that, everything will be kept at other-
So this won't be visible at your home as an active, functioning business location? Somebody driving by isn't going to be able to tell?
No, there'll, there may be a trailer occasionally on the side of the house, back behind the fence, like I said, but that's it.
Most of the administrative is what you're doing at your home.
Mm-hmm.
And you're keeping the equipment in other locations.
Yes.
Is that what you're telling us?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so my, my soapbox always is- So my soapbox always is that we live in residential neighborhoods. And by giving you a business license, we don't want to change the look of that neighborhood. We don't wanna have any more potential danger or issues within that.
Traffic.
Because that's when we have to go in and say, hey, we've gotta pull your license because you're not, because this is this is more of a commercial business. It should be in a commercial space and not in a residential space. So that's, that's the guarantee we need to make on something, especially something like this. We have had, we have had problems with this, with this type of business. And so I'm concerned and so I'm being straightforward and saying, hey, will you toe the line on this? Will you keep that residential neighborhood or residential neighborhood?
Yeah, no, I understand and I can see how there would be problems. But like I said, I'm not looking to, my home really has nothing to do with the business. It's obviously just a mobile service, so my home's technically the business address, but I won't be storing much of anything there, so.
If you do store things there, will they be behind the fence, like you said, with the trailer? Cause we don't want things left on the driveway or.
Front yard.
Front door.
Yeah. No, like I said, so realistically, I'm looking at purchasing two trailers eventually. And like I said, they'll mainly be stored offsite from my house. But if one's ever there, at the end of the day or whatever, it'll be on the side of the house, back behind, so.
Are you in that new subdivision, Happy Days? Is that where you're?
No, it's, it's Heart Estates from Visionary.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of kids in that area and so.
Yeah, okay. I have a couple kids as well.
You're probably in that boat, so protect them.
Hey, any further questions or motions?
I move that we approve the business license for DW Halls LLC. Second.
Okay, Tim and David are motion and second. We'll do this roll call. Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Sounds like it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Make us proud. Welcome to Far West.
Okay, the next one is the Iron Shop LLC. Do we have a representative? Come on up, tell us your name and what you're up to.
My name's David Edgell and I'm up to no good.
Okay.
Denied.
Oh, come on, I've got a white beard. The Iron Shop is a gym that I have owned and operated since 2003. I'm a fitness professional. Up to this point, it has been very limited access, clients only. I have paired up with some corporations around, operated last couple of years out of BDO. Spencer Knight has developed a new building behind his. He's, in my opinion, developing a really nice health plaza over there. He currently has Utah Physical, Chad Tenny. Chad Tenny and I have worked together on people, unbreaking people for quite a while. And he said, told Spencer, hey, if you get a chance to get David to move in here, then do it by all means. So I'm a 24/7 facility, which fits in with what we have over there. Because by the time all my people are headed off to work, they do the dentistry stuff all day long. And when they leave at 5 o'clock and everybody's off work, they come and we can put use to that big parking lot at night. I've been doing this professionally for 35 years. I'm good at what I do. And this will be the first time that I offer more of public access memberships. I don't know if any of you go to the gym, but one of the frustrations a lot of people have is big gyms oversell and then you can't get in and do your stuff. That's not the environment that I create. We have an impact internationally. I send, I've sent actually a lot of girls from Fremont High School off to play soccer at the collegiate level. We do some pretty interesting things. We were supposed to be in there about four or five months ago. Construction delays have kicked it back quite a bit. Which for me as a business owner, not selling gym membership in January is quite a kick to the teeth because everybody kinda is already there. So grand opening. I'm still getting everything put together, but it is an impressive facility.
How big a space are you occupying?
About 3,000 square feet.
On the topic of overselling, what are you doing to make sure that that doesn't happen like the big gyms?
400 membership cap. I don't wanna do anything more than that. And I can walk you through the numbers, what that does for me. I've got a max occupancy of 49. 80% of people that buy a gym membership will come once a week or less. 20% will come twice a week or more. Your busiest hours on any gym are gonna be from 4:30 in the afternoon until about 6:30. Okay, you go through the math, 30% of people will come before work. 60% of people will come after work and 10% will be spread throughout the rest of the day. So what that does numbers wise is if I cap it at 400, that'll put less than, it'll be on a Monday night in the busiest time of year, we put between 25 and 30 in the gym at once. Which with an occupancy of 49 makes for plenty of space. And we've got a lot of parking to manage that. So what with, what is really nice about it is we're off the roads. So that when I tell my people to go play in traffic, they don't have to. There's CrossFit gyms that they have people go run and they, they end up running up and down the street and that's not safe. So the fact that it's back and contained behind is actually quite a boon and a blessing for, for what we're trying to accomplish. We've put, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to stop by there, but the lighting on the outside, the building's actually really impressive. It's been pretty interesting to watch it be built and quite a, quite an education on where we're at in manual labor.
When can you move in now?
I started moving my stuff in physically a month ago today.
How soon would you be up and running?
As you guys give me the, soon as I kiss the ring.
I don't know, we're looking another two months down the road, you know.
I should, I should be, I've been holding off on doing official business until I officially business.
Fligned up.
And I've still, I've had stuff in storage for three years because I had to downsize from a very large facility. Like I said, I paired up with, with some other corporations around and made some really nice relationships. But I've got it probably about 90% ready of functioning. We're test driving everything. I've got a really nice floor layout. My first gym floor that I designed was at 18 years old. It was the Weber State Gym. I've been doing this for a while and I, I like what I do because when you walk in, it makes sense. And it's, I have some very scary looking people that when you walk in, you'll find out that they're some of the most amazing human beings on the planet. So it's, I, my youngest client right now is 10. My oldest clients are in their 70s. And we, I've got clients that regularly see me that they started with me in 1998. So we've done it for a while, so. And.
I like it a lot.
My neighbors, I went to Weber High School. My neighbors, we all grew up together. I'm from Taylor. Already have a fairly large following. Hope to bring a good service because there's not really anything like that out here. My neighbor works for EOS and she told me one day I'd rather not drive 20 minutes to downtown to be able to catch my workout where I'm gonna get interrupted by the people that know that I work there. And it was the next day that Spencer and I were signing some, some paperwork committing to each other. And I couldn't tell her that, hey, your blessing is right around the corner, so here we are. And I know you from somewhere.
You're gonna be staff for 24/7?
Um, no. Staffing is, I will be there a lot, but the people that come in the middle of the night are usually the people that already know what they're doing.
And that's, I guess my question is, is there any concern for security? I know it's well lighted, but.
So.
Are you taking precautions?
So it's finger scan and card scan doors. So the only people that can get in are the people that are supposed to be there. We've got cameras all over the parking lot. Cameras will be in the building specifically for securing people. And for the most part, if you wanna cause a problem, my gym, it probably would not be a good idea because the people that you're gonna cause a problem with are probably gonna do something that's not gonna work out well for the problem.
They have tools available.
Yeah, we, no, we, I have a bunch of former military guys I've worked with. I don't know if you guys know Lorraine Draper. He was the August Walk Commander for the longest time. A lot of people that I've worked with are, are either current police officers or former police officers. We have a good cream of the crop in our community. And it's something I'm pretty proud of. I, the tribe I've cultivated is pretty nice. And I wanna do that even more.
Any further questions for the applicant?
When I have my grand opening, I, you're on Facebook all the time. I'll extend that invitation.
Let the rest of us know.
I've already hassled you, so you should.
Oh, okay, I, I can give back.
So when I, when I do that, I expect y'all to show up and have a good time.
That would be great, thank you.
Just, just to even meet the people. It's a pretty neat community.
Okay, yeah, when I first saw the iron shop, I was expecting a welding.
Yep, yep. Well, it started off because we were lifting in a garage build at my parents' house where my brother and I built hot rods. And one of my friends said, well, we can't just call this David's Garage. What do you call it? And when the family, we called it the shop. And it kinda makes sense because in a shop, you build machines. And I've built, I've taken a lot of broken people and turned them into world-class athletes. Just normal people, everyday people. And then they just figure out that they like to do the fun stuff that everybody else is doing, so.
Thank you. Any questions and/or motions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the business license for the Iron Shop LLC.
I'll second.
Okay, David and Tim are motion second. Do this roll call. David?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me.
What we do now?
Go to work.
Turn on lights, open the door.
Come on, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Welcome.
Welcome to Far West.
Absolutely.
Make us proud.
Make us strong.
It'll be a white chimp moment.
Okay, next item on the agenda, consider approval of the amendment to the general plan for the northernmost parcel of the Far West Landing property, parcel blah blah blah, to allow for the commercial zone. If you wanna bring those, let's start with this one. So this is our current zoning. This reflects that there's commercial A1 and M1 over in that location. We're talking about the one that's currently labeled M1. Go to the next little picture over. This is what our current future zoning looks like. That northern piece says manufacturing because that's what it is. And then go to the third one. What we're considering is the final one. If we change, modify or amend the general plan, that whole area can be commercial. So that's what we're considering. That's what the planning commission recommended to us. Comments, questions, motions?
So we do this, which I have no problem with, but that group that came in that wanted M1, they're still.
They are zoned M1. We are not taking away what they have. This only changes what it can change to.
I just wanted to make that clear.
Yes. Yeah, once you've entitled, you can't remove that entitlement.
Unless they ask.
Unless they ask. At least that's how we run business. I've heard we could actually do it if we wanted to. But we're not gonna do that. But we can change our plan, so this would be our plan. How's the council feel?
I was gonna say, I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the general plan for the northmost parcel, parcel of Far West Landing property with the parcel number of 19-016-0058 to allow a commercial zone consideration of the city building cleaning, I'm sorry. Yeah.
The city cleaning services.
I'll second the first part of that motion.
Okay, Bob and Boyd are motion second. We'll do this roll call. Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, we have officially amended the general plan to allow that to be commercial once again. Okay, the next item is consideration of city building cleaning services. I'm gonna lean on Lindsay a little bit on this, but where this comes from is we have a contractor. We've gone through a couple of folks that we changed who their team was, at least wants to get better service out of them. We would like to consider getting a new contractor, which could cost us a little bit more, but they might, there probably will be. We'll insist on better service. Does that sound correct, Lindsay? Okay.
What's the frequency? How often are they in here?
Lindsay, can you help us?
I think currently, I'm not so sure. Currently they come twice.
Twice a week. What do they do?
Wednesdays, the quicker of the two empty garbage, then the bathrooms vacuum. And then sometime during the weekend, it's a full, and it's both buildings.
They do the.
And that's this, that's this company?
This entire building and ours.
That's this company that's doing it or is that's?
No, that's what we have, that.
Okay, so this one.
I believe this would be giving us similar.
Yeah, it's in there. I read it earlier.
Suave?
Yeah.
Yeah. How do the rates compare?
This is a little more.
95 a month.
I think we're paying six.
Administrative building, twice a week, rec once a week and deep cleaning quarterly.
Yeah, I want to say we're paying six compared to all this.
This is a $300 increase.
It is going up and Andrea actually talked them down from, I would say 11 is what the original.
I feel like we need a little more cleaning in the gym area than once a week, but is that?
Especially the locker areas.
I guess the workers there could be doing.
Yeah, the staff does quite a bit of it, but the, these folks, I think they go into like the locker rooms and showers.
Restrooms and showers, yeah. That's what has to happen.
I'm gonna guess that's what they're doing now.
How does our budget accommodate a $300 a month increase? We should be, but are we?
I mean, we're talking about the increase, but where we're halfway through, we should have enough.
To get us through.
To get us through and then there might be a slight increase in the next year's budget.
So how soon do they wanna get started on this?
We have to give 30 days notice to the current.
Basically, March first. I'll make a motion that we that we take this proposal from Suave and implement it into our city for a little bit different cleaning service.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have Boyd and Tim. Also do this roll call. David?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Okay.
I should have asked this, but are we doing this, is it a year to year, is it a month to month? What's the term?
The contract term.
I haven't seen a contract with this proposal yet.
I wouldn't wanna go more than six years, two years.
Most would be a year at a time.
Okay, all right. We, after that, we can talk about it, but maybe this first.
Good trial period.
Renewals anyway, aren't they?
Okay, thank you. Okay, here comes the fun part. Consider approval of reappointment of planning commission members. Geneva Blanchard, Lou Best, and the appointment of Jason Anderson as full member. How's the council feel?
To me, this one's easy. I'd like to make a motion to approve Geneva, Lou and Jason as full members. Reappoint and make Jason a full member.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have B and B, Boyd and Bob as motion and second. Roll call, David?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Let me mention, Mayor, that Geneva had to step down as the advisor, the co-advisor. No, I'm not whining. I'm making us, I'm making, I'm giving you some information. Geneva had to step down as the co-advisor to the youth city council. And Jason has stepped into that role. He's already met with us once. And, and so this will fit in very nicely with that. And that's only to say thank you to Geneva for helping me and them get this thing off the ground in the first place. But we're having a good movement forward and I think it's been a nice clean transition. Thank you.
Okay, and as I'm gonna say in another part of this, consider approval of reappointment of planning commission chair and vice chair, which would be Geneva and Lyle.
So moved.
So seconded.
Tim and David are motion and second. Bob?
Aye.
Tim?
Aye.
Boyd?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Okay, all is good in the universe.
Thank you for what you.
And now, now we can put out basically an opening for an alternate member. So we'll bring in some, some more blood.
Two weeks and three days.
Okay, now on to report on assignments. Who should I pick on first? I'm gonna pick on David first because he has a lot to report on. I made sure of it.
Yeah, if I forget something, will you tell me? Let's back up to January 22nd was officials day with the state legislature. The mayor and I took down two of our youth city council members. And we spent the day there. We went early, had breakfast in the Capitol Rotunda with a billion other kids from all over the state. We went early, had breakfast in the Capitol Rotunda with a billion other kids from all over the state. I thought we were doing really well to have five members of a youth city council. We are. There were youth city councils that showed up with twenty-five members. I'm not exaggerating. They were like a whole company, but they were from large cities like Sandy, South Jordan, places with a lot of population and a lot of young people.
They showed up in buses where we could all ride in Dave's car.
Yeah, we all went down together. It was nice. It was a good day. We had some interesting workshops over at the Salt Palace Convention Center, had a wonderful lunch. Heard from our state attorney general. No, from, was that right?
No, it was the lieutenant governor.
The lieutenant governor and then some nice presentations. It was a good thing. The meal was wonderful. And then we went back over to the state capitol and met with Matt Gwynne, who's our local representative. And he took us on a very nice tour again of the capitol, the House chamber. We went in there for a few minutes. And he took us on a tour of the Capitol building. And I think we gave those kids a memorable day. And so that was a good experience. I attended two WACOG housing subcommittee meetings in the interim. And the one just this last Monday is all focused on the state legislature right now and the House bills that are before it. There are some things coming relating, again, without a surprise, to housing. Nothing has gone the distance yet, so we're still tracking and watching what's going on with that. And I'm not going to go through the list of bills that they were talking about, but we're trying to keep an eye out, like you said, with our EADUs. We want to see if any additional requirements come out of the state regarding these. They're messing around with parking and yeah, different kinds of things. So we gotta wait and see if we have to amend this at all, Geneva, by the time you get it through your your group. I think any changes we have to make will be minimal, but that doesn't mean that there won't be any. We had a a meeting with Angie and Lindsay and the mayor and myself. Boyd, you were conspicuously absent as we start looking at some of our celebrations for the year. And we've got some things in motion with regard to Easter. We're gonna use our youth city council to help us with that. Angie, who is our senior center director, is also very connected with the Montessori school and seems to think that she can bring some young people over from their student council to help us as well. And so we've got some good things moving forward in preparation for our Easter program. Mayor, have I forgotten anything?
I can wait for mine, but I'll go ahead and say it. At the Easter scramble, we're also going to be cutting the ribbon on the playground.
Very good.
We decided the timing of that's gonna be, because I looked at some of my pictures from last year. The Easter scramble happens quickly, so that's at nine o'clock on the nineteenth of April. We'll be cutting the ribbon at nine fifteen.
Hope there's still somebody there.
Because last year, by nine nineteen, the place was empty. So how it works.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
I believe that's all I've got for right now.
Hey, thank you, David. Boyd?
Okay, just a couple of things. First of all, our board meeting for just fire district has been canceled for this month just because of different obligations that the chiefs have in training and different events. Mayor and I spent an evening last week over at the sheriff's office for their quarterly contract meeting where they gave us some pretty good statistics of what's going on, what they're doing, how they're spending the money, what they're spending the money on, just some great statistics. They also told us that we would be increasing our allocation this year, and I'll give you that information in just a minute. They also set up a team to work on the allocations for next year. And I was voluntold that I would be on that committee. No, I'm excited to be part of that and to do that. So just to give you some ideas. As many of you know, that our allocation is sixty percent based on the calls that are made to our city and forty percent on our population. And that's the way it is for Far West, Hooper Huntsville, Marys Slatterville, Plain City, U N A, Washington Terrace, West Haven, and unincorporated Weaver County. Our statistics are pretty good. We found that we were in the bottom three for costs and things, don't you think, Mayor?
Yeah, and calls.
And calls, and so.
Which are costs.
Which, exactly. We currently pay seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars a year for our sheriff's service. And that cost is going to increase six point eight percent, which is forty-nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars to a total for twenty-five, twenty-six of seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-one, which seems like a lot of money, but we also went over statistics in that meeting of what the surrounding cities are charging or what it's costing them to have their own police force. And it's, in most cases, upwards of two million dollars. And so, and they don't have all the services. We are getting a lot of, a lot of good things for what we have. And I believe that Weaver County does take good care of Far West. So again, our new budget will be that. I sent that on to Cody so he can help put that into the budget for next year. Are there any questions about?
Do you want to share the cost per call and per resident?
So cost per resident.
This is per year.
For, this will be for next year. This will be with that update. Cost per resident is ninety-six dollars and fifty-seven cents per call. And the cost per call is actually a hundred and seventy-nine dollars and one cent. So kind of gives you an idea of what's going on there.
And we can share this sheet because you look at it compared to the other cities.
And if you look at that, we had a six point eight percent change. Most of them were, there was an eight point one, eight point one four percent, a twenty point five six percent next door with Marys Slatterville, four point eight in Plain City. U N A went backwards, and Washington Terrace went backwards, but West Haven was up nine point oh seven percent. And unincorporated was up four point four six percent. So we're in the middle of the pack with that.
Based on usage?
Based on, based on those, the two criteria.
So what was the cost per call again, real quick?
Cost per call is a hundred and, for our city is a hundred and seventy-nine dollars one cent.
And they calculate it ninety-six dollars per person based on our eight thousand twenty-one?
Eight thousand. Yeah, eight thousand twenty-one population is what they have us as. These were numbers that I was using to factor in what it would cost. And we can have a number that we maybe build in so we know what it's gonna cost when these people move in toward, when these.
New development.
New developments. How it would be. It's gonna cost us this much. It's gonna cost us this much for top and different things, so. Anyway, appreciate the sheriff's office on that, and I'll keep you updated as we go along with our first meetings on February twenty-fourth, so. And that's.
We get to keep Mark as a lieutenant.
We do. Kylie Slater was, that's good. Kylie Slater, who has been here before, was promoted to a lieutenant. There's some good things going, and they're growing within the organization there, so.
And for what it's worth, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, they actually wanted you to go to another city and you respectfully requested to stay with us.
Thank you. Thanks for sticking with us.
The do is the key word, right? Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Okay, what else you got, Boyd?
I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay. Tim, I know you got a piece or two.
So basically, I'm gonna just stick with the current legislation. We're almost halfway through. There's four more weeks left of that. Mayor and I have been, the last couple of Mondays, we've been viewing this on the internet rather than going down there and fighting the crowds. But it's good because we can discuss a few things, but there are maybe four or five bills that are really that we need to keep an eye on right now. House Bill Thirty-seven, James Donegan on housing has to do with the density bonus and exchange of units being affordable for owner occupied, data collection, zoning, development, infrastructure, things of that nature. It's currently pending right now because they anticipate some changes in the verbiage. The next bill will be House Bill Oh Eighty-eight. It's also housing. This bill would make a number of changes relating to policies like adjusting the frequency of the Modern Income Housing Plan Report, which is not a bad thing. But then it also is allowing the single and eternal, internal and external accessory dwelling units to be permitted in use in any urban municipality. If it is built on a lot with a detached, single-family home, in other words, they're forcing it to, for us to have little or no say on how that ADU or where it can be put in the city. So that one, they currently are opposing. That hasn't hit committee yet, but I suspect it will. The next one, House Bill Oh Ninety, which allows for a detached, single-family home built on six thousand square foot. That's a change. It first went in at four thousand square feet. So that's still being opposed, but it's something that we'll be looking at. It also allows housing to be permitted in any commercial zone in any urban municipality. So they'll be watching that one. House Bill One Forty-nine, this bill prohibits an institutional investor from purchasing a single-family home in the state. And my anticipation of that is corporations go in and buy single-family homes and rent them out. This is kind of a way to, to kind of regulate that. So they're monitoring that bill. They don't anticipate any real problems or changes with it, so we'll see how that comes out. The last one was House Bill One Seventy-five, which amends the language on international residential code from one and two-family dwellings to one, two, three, and four-family dwellings. So it's just expanding the verbiage a little bit. That's still pending. There's a couple of others, but they were really of little impact. The real key comes typically in the last two weeks of legislation, so by the time we meet again, we have, I should have a little bit more information on what, if any, changes or amendments will be made. It doesn't look too severe this year compared to last, but we'll keep an eye on. That's all I have.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
In the meeting we were in Monday, they talked about H B Three Sixty-One and S B One Eighty-One, which are affordability-focused bills. Have you heard any more on those?
They're, right now, it's monitoring and pending because they anticipate some verbiage changes before they project to committee. So we'll see how that maybe, we might see some of that on Monday.
Affordability is an interesting issue.
It is. It certainly is. One thing that, House Bill Three Sixty-Seven, before I forget, that went through last year modifies provisions relating to municipal fees. That's going to be probably popping up again for some revisions or changes. They, for some reason, they just get the feeling like somebody's gonna push for something. We haven't seen it yet, but we'll keep it on our radar.
Okay, thank you. Did he answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. What you got, Bob?
I've got a couple of things. First, as far as roads, the work on Four Thousand, which is just across from Smith and Edwards, continues. The weather's been favorable enough for them to lay a considerable amount over the last few days. They're not done, so just be cautious because the flag person gets interested in watching activity instead of the vehicles. Just be careful. That's all I can say. When you're driving down Four Thousand.
That's from experience.
That's from experience. When the, when the sign turns, just as you're departing and another car's starting to come at you, things get a little fun. So, but just the progress is, is good and it's beneficial. As far as the sewage treatment and county operations, there's a new organization within the sewer district called Audit. And I was moved from long-range planning into the Audit Committee this last session. So we're gonna figure out how to keep things within budget, on time, and then report back to the state what is going on and reporting our status. Progress on the new sewer system, it's gonna use ultraviolet light to eradicate bacteria or to nuke it, if you will, is still in progress. It's coming up towards completion. The significant point there is that at some point in time, they're gonna be using chlorine and ultraviolet light, which is gonna increase the cost for the treatment, but it should not be passed on to the public. So just be aware that it's going to happen. It's gonna be an internal cost and no problem to us. As far as county emergency management, thank you, Boyd, for sending me the notice for the meeting. There's two things. One, Lisa Schwartz from the county held the emergency management session for the month. And all the cities were, representatives from the cities that were there were instructed on CERT versus emergency management. She took the time to just decisively split the two apart because they are two separate operations. And some of the cities were merging the programs together. So it was very, very good to hear that. The email that you sent me from Lisa Schwartz is about emergency operations centers and ECCs, so EO and ECCs. I'm gonna start the training so we have somebody within the city that will be emergency operations center qualified. It's recommended. I've asked for two other people so that if I fall off the truck, somebody else can pick up and go. I think it's gonna be Jay Wimpy, but I need to talk to you about who really should do it. The big thing is, in order to take the certification course, which is a three-day course, that's gonna be offered late this month or in April, you have to complete five separate trainings up to that level. So I'm gonna be on the computer for a while, so if you need me, I will probably be at home watching and you can still call me. Yeah. A good note for the old building that I stumbled into is that the ham radio club that asked, can we use your facility, did. And those chairs that we got for free were all lined up. They took the, made a makeshift podium out of a computer transport dolly that I had put in there, and they held a meeting. And it's grand that they, they found another purpose for that building. And then the question was, can we renovate the big room? And I said, I will talk to the city council and see if we can find some funding, not necessarily just CERT, but combined. It's still gonna be city money to do some renovations in the big room to try and make it into a meeting gathering place for things like this ham radio club or other family events rented out, things of that nature. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you all very much. Hopefully, I'll be fairly quick because luckily, a lot of the things that I'm associated with, you guys covered. I appreciate that. WACOG was canceled, except for the housing subcommittee, and David already reported on that, so I'm gonna just go ahead and move on. Trails Foundation Board, Trails Foundation, they're announcing that this is their thirtieth year that they've been in place. We had a meeting where we talked about projects going on. There's some new trailheads and stuff being created. Some events that they're planning for the next year or so, and also to encourage, they're encouraging all of the. encouraging all of, all of us, so I'm going to go ahead and encourage as well, membership, because membership and stuff like that raise funds for this nonprofit. They help maintain all of our trails that everybody gets to use for free. So, you know, we all know nothing's actually free. So if you like going hiking, please seriously consider joining so you can help pay for those trails you're enjoying. Um, the Wasatch Front Regional Growth Committee, they're not meeting until March 20th. Uh, the new committee I'm on, the Active Transportation Committee, they're meeting on, uh, just next week, February 11th, and I might have an opportunity to go somewhere cool. I might be going to New Jersey to go look at what they're doing with active transportation, so. I have to do it on my dime, by the way, so, no, no cost to the city. Um, Legislative Policy Committee, Tim covered pretty much all of it. Um, we have been holding it in the conference room, so Mondays, and it's okay for anyone to show up because we don't have to worry about, uh, uh, quorum because it is an open and public meeting that has been announced. So, you know, don't not come just because you think there'll be too many of us, because we're in a meeting that's been advertised. Um, House Committee, we've talked about that. Uh, did you talk, you didn't talk about Park Committee, did you?
I was not there.
Oh, that's why. Okay, um, and I didn't write anything down thinking that you or Katie were going to take care of it. So anyway, we had a, a Park Committee meeting. We're still talking about, uh, Meadows. We're making some plans and putting in some grant monies, and Lyle will help me if I forget anything. Um, but for the most part, we're making progress on the things we want to do to improve and create our, our parks and whatnot. And we do, we're looking for, uh, the correct amount of funding and all of that for what we need to do. Um, on code enforcement, uh, luckily this is the time of year where there's not a lot of weeds and stone removal issues are not an issue right now. So as far as other, uh, I'll call them code enforcement things. I think you all know that we, uh, uh, tagged quite a few of the business licenses. Nate and I have been meeting over the last several Fridays. Nate went home, if you were looking for him. He got tired of us. So, and for the most part, all the ones that had site plan issues have promised that they will have, they gave us actual, um, months or dates that they would have their site plans finished implementing or updated or whatever, you know, but I'm going to say they're, I'm hoping to have them done this year. They were saying they were going to have them done sooner. Some of them were as early as March, and I haven't seen any progress. So I'm going to say hopefully during the next year, we'll get those site plans, uh, taken care of. Even non-typical, they actually have put in a permit to have the house demolished. And it's going to be demolished.
Roger's going.
Huh?
Roger's going.
Oh, okay.
No, I should say that.
So demo is happening, so we don't have to worry about that anymore. Um, Far West Auto is the only business that I, we still held the license on, uh, until they come into compliance. And that, that he asked if we could update or change his conditional use. I go, not until you can come into compliance. And it made it very clear that it's 25 in front and 30 in the back, and he insisted that he, he would, uh, continue to work towards that. Again, we gave you 45 days last year. It's been 370.
One's in front cannot be wrecked either.
Right, yes.
It'll all be for sale, ready to go.
Yes. So he is clear again on that. We will, of course, be observing that. He tried the, well, I can't do anything without a business license. And I go, you can move cars all day long without a business license because you're just moving them, getting rid of them, whatever you've got to do.
You can't sell anything right now.
Yeah, not legally. Okay, uh, there was a few residential businesses with signs that, uh, we, um, had them come in. Uh, for instance, the barber shop from Thorough Clean, those are residential businesses that's really had signs. Uh, we had a discussion with them. They've actually taken them down. They understand that they're residential businesses, they should not have signs. But there is something we may want to consider in certain areas is a live-work conditional use in a commercial zone where, you know, you, like, for instance, a barber shop that's in a house, maybe that's a commercial zone and they can live there. That's not un, untypical with live-work type of thing, right, Geneva? It's pretty common. And maybe we can have something where they can actually develop these things. I, I was thinking perhaps the housing committee should consider talking about this before we make any recommendations to the planning commission.
That's a good idea.
That's all right. And, uh, that's pretty much it as far as business licenses and whatnot. Uh, back to, what have I got left? Oh, yeah, Bonavista, my, one of my favorites. So the Hot Springs Tank, I don't know if everybody knows where that is. That's up on Rocky Point. The contract has been rewarded for 4.1 million, uh, so they're going to be starting on that right away. Um, the Shop Well, as they call it, so the land behind Bonavista, which actually goes into that new development, the river, uh, River Blacksmith thing, Legends, whatever the name is this week, they have actually purchased the land behind Bonavista. And so what needs to happen, even though they purchased it, they probably need to come to the planning commission because I believe that the, uh, fire department also wants in on, because they all want to expand, and it's, and it's as opposed to being part of that subdivision, they should be able to just modify their subdivision to expand those properties. And that will also, it could, uh, be the excavation company too, because they need, that's going to be their way out. So those things are happening. We took care of business licenses. Boyd talked about the shit city partnership thing. Um, the CRA Guiding Principles Resolution, um, I did not put it on tonight, so we wouldn't go into a CRA meeting, so I'm going to share it with everybody so that we can look it over, absorb it, and on February 20th, I want us to consider it. And I believe Liam's already got what we need to as far as a resolution to adopt. Um, and I've only got two last things to say. I want everybody to stay off the ice and slow down. There, those are my two loud words to say to people. And I have one last.
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Boyd and Tim and Bob all made motions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you all. This thing's worse.